Good evening, everyone. I will now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, November the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. And we'll begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Councilor Oliver. Councilor Oliver.
President, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you very much.
Can you hear me, Mr. President?
Yes, yes, Chairman Oliver, we can hear you. Thank you, please proceed.
Let's take a moment. I want to acknowledge all that that are interned in nursing homes affected by the epidemic virus and many other socially challenging illnesses that many in our family and personal friends are suffering at this very moment. So my heart and prayer go out to all of them, from all of us. Mr. President, I will begin. Oh, Heavenly Father, I give thanks to you for this day and many days in the past and those days that are coming tomorrow and thereafter. Heavenly Father, give me the strength and the wisdom to do what is morally right. When I finish my prayer, as my grandmother would say, don't run from me. I asked the Lord to stop you from running. I'll whoop you myself when she get through praying. And I feel the same way. That when I get through praying, I will do the work that was passed down through Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, down through their ages, all the way down to my four parents and your four parents. If we do their will in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, I ask thee to answer our prayer. Our prayer. Amen.
Councilor Oliver, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Oliver. Before I begin, I would ask that you pause with me to remember the life and service of IFD engineer Matt Bennett, who passed away unexpectedly on Friday, November the thirteenth, after responding to a possible structural collapse at a local home. Members of this council proudly and fairly consider ourselves public servants, but none of us can lay as rightfully claim to that title as Matt Bennett. Matt lived just forty-nine brief years on this earth, but was a public servant for most of them. As a child of just nine or ten years old, Matt became a frequent visitor to IFD Station Thirty-Three, where one of his relatives was an officer. By the time he was thirteen, Matt had joined the IFD Explorer Post, where he remained until he was eighteen, after working his way up to Chief of the Post. Upon turning eighteen, Matt became an active volunteer firefighter in Wayne Township, before going on to work as a Richard Hospital EMT and an IFD dispatcher, before being appointed to the Franklin Township Fire Department in nineteen ninety-seven and subsequently to the Indianapolis Fire Department in two thousand and ten. It is little wonder his fellow firefighters at Station One said Matt knew a little bit about everything. Our first order of business tonight is a special resolution recognizing the Indianapolis Fire Department's official international accreditation designation from the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. It's a rare and special accomplishment and one for which the Indianapolis Fire Department should be celebrated. But we know, of course, that across IFD ranks, no one will feel much like celebrating tonight. Instead, their thoughts and ours are with Matt's wife, Carlita, his mother, Roseanne, and all of Matt's beloved loved ones. May they rest in the love and support of this city and may Matt rest in power and peace. If we could please, a moment of silence. Thank you, council members. Madam Clerk, please conduct a voice roll call, and councilors. Please signify by studying your name and answering present following the clerk's reading of your name. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Adamson. Councilor Adamson.
Madam Clerk, he's trying to sign in at this moment. If you can come back, Vice President Adamson.
Thank you. Councilor Anay.
Councilor Anay, present.
Councilor Bane.
Councilor Bane, present.
Barth.
Councilor Barth, present.
Councilor Boots.
Councilor Boots, present.
Councilor Brown.
Councilor Brown, present.
Councilor Carlino.
Councilor Carlino, present.
Councilor Dill.
Councilor Dill, present.
Councilor Ethan Evans.
Councilor Ethan Evans, present.
Councilor Jared Evans.
Councilor Jared Evans, present.
Councilor Graves.
Councilor Graves, present.
Councilor Gray. Councilor Gray.
Councilor Gray, present.
Thank you. Councilor Hart.
Councilor Hart, present.
Councilor Jackson.
Councilor Jackson, present.
Councilor Jones.
Councilor Jones, present.
Councilor Larison.
Councilor Larison, present.
Councilor Lewis.
Councilor Lewis, present.
Councilor Masgary.
Councilor Masgary, present.
Councilor McCormick.
Councilor McCormick, present.
Councilor Maury.
Councilor Maury, present.
Councilor Oliver.
Councilor Oliver, present.
Councilor Osalee.
Councilor Osalee, present.
Councilor Potts.
Councilor Potts, present.
Councilor Ray.
Councilor Ray, present.
Councilor Robinson.
Councilor Robinson, present.
Councilor Adamson. Not yet. So right now, we have twenty-four counselors present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a call. We have no guests this evening, and so we will proceed to official communications. And so this next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held electronically and in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, at seven o'clock PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osalee, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the law
Are you hearing her?
And the Can you all hear me? Pursuant to the law in the state of Indiana, I caused to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers two fifty-five, three hundred, three zero four and three zero six, two thousand and twenty. Said hearing to be held on Monday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, at seven o'clock PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day
Where's IT?
to the City County Council.
Can you help me get IT, please?
Hughes, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance numbers eighteen through twenty and twenty-six. Police Special Service District Fiscal Ordinance Number One. Fire Special Service District Fiscal Ordinance Number One. Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Fiscal Ordinance Number One. General Ordinance Numbers thirty-eight through forty-seven and General Resolution Numbers twenty-three through twenty-five. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
So I'm having some audio difficulties. Can you all hear me? Very good. Madam Clerk, thank you for the official communications. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Councilor Adams, and I believe you have a motion.
Mr. President, Vice President Adamson, still can I get on at this time?
All right, in the absence of Councilor Adamson, I will make a motion, and that is to move, I move to amend or the agenda to advance proposal number three zero six, two thousand and twenty, and add it as the first item of business under special orders final adoption for action this evening.
Second.
There are timing issues regarding this proposal that require passage before the next full council meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Very good. Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilor Adamson. Councilor Anay.
Anay, nay.
Councilor Bane.
Councilor Bane, nay.
Councilor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Councilor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Councilor Brown.
Brown, aye.
Councilor Carlino.
Councilor Carlino, aye.
Councilor Dill.
Councilor Dill, nay.
Councilor Ethan Evans.
Councilor Ethan Evans, aye.
Councilor Jared Evans.
Councilor Jared Evans, yes.
Councilor Graves.
Councilor Graves, aye.
Councilor Gray.
Councilor Gray, yes.
Councilor Hart.
Councilor Hart, nay.
Councilor Jackson.
Councilor Jackson, aye.
Councilor Jones.
Councilor Jones, aye.
Councilor Larison.
Councilor Larison, aye.
Councilor Lewis.
Councilor Lewis, aye.
Councilor Masgary.
Councilor Masgary, aye.
Councilor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Councilor Maury.
Nay.
Councilor Oliver.
Councilor Oliver, yes.
Councilor Osalee.
Councilor Osalee, aye.
Councilor Potts.
Councilor Potts, aye.
Councilor Ray.
Councilor Ray, aye.
Councilor Robinson.
Councilor Robinson, aye.
Thank you. I'll try again, but Councilor Adamson, Councilor Adamson. Hey, Mr. President, we have twenty-four, I'm sorry, we have fourteen, no. I apologize. We have nineteen, yea, and five, nay.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Proposal number three zero six, two thousand and twenty will be placed on the agenda as the first item of business under final adoption for action later this evening. So the next item on our agenda is approval of the journals for October the twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Do I have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Very good. Thank you, councilors. We will now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. And the first item on our agenda is proposal number three three zero. Chairman Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President, and you know how I like to brag on the Indianapolis Fire Department, but tonight we have to ask that we be able to postpone this until the next meeting. Our illustrious chief is kind of under the weather this evening and also with the passing of the firefighters.
Consent.
Mr. President, you are muted.
Do I have consent to postpone?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you, councilors. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three one, which recognizes past and present women counselors of the Indianapolis Marion County City County Council. This is introduced by Councilors Lewis, Brown, Carlita, Jackson, Jones, and McCormick. Who will be representing that this evening?
Mr. President, it's Councilor Lewis. At this point, we're asking for postponement.
Right. Counselors? Do I have consent?
Consent.
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 Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three three two, which recognizes the Arts Council and the artists in Indianapolis. Who will be presenting on this? I do believe that that is also Councilor Adamson.
Sorry.
Is, would there be anyone else who would like to present on this, or should we ask for a postponement on this as well?
Disponement, I recommend postponement.
Second.
Very good.
Mr. President, it's me. Councilor Adams is on now.
All right, Councilor Adamson, are you on?
I am on. I am on with my phone. I'm not sure if you can see me. Am I coming in clear?
We can see you, we can hear you. Thank you.
You can see and you can hear me. Great. I don't know where we are on the agenda since I'm just popping in.
I will tell you now. We are in proposal number three three two, which recognizes the Arts Council and the artists in Indianapolis. I believe this is your
Outstanding.
your social resolution.
Yes, yes, outstanding, and I'm ready to do that. Thank you, Mr. President. This is a special resolution in support of the Arts Council and the artists in Indianapolis. Whereas the spread of COVID-nineteen has led to the loss of four thousand nine hundred and thirty-two lives in the state of Indiana, over two hundred and sixty thousand residents who have tested positive for the virus, and widespread economic devastation. And whereas the impact of COVID-nineteen has disproportionately affected communities of color and laid bare the iniquities of public health system, at the same time protests against systemic racism have ignited a new movement calling for change and justice. And whereas there's a growing awareness that racism is a public health crisis, and as with COVID-nineteen, stopping the spread requires acknowledgement, education, protection, and the intentional action by every one of us. And whereas the city of Indianapolis recognizes the power of the arts to educate and create meaningful social change and thus collaborated with the Arts Council of Indianapolis on a citywide public health campaign to encourage residents and visitors to wear face coverings to reduce the spread of COVID-nineteen. And whereas, while the wearing of masks has become a pressing and polarizing issue, a politicized issue, growing scientific evidence supports, sorry, I lost my place up here, supports their effectiveness in protecting against the spread of COVID-nineteen. And whereas, through Federal Cares Act funding allocating through City County Council, the city of Indianapolis commissioned six diverse Indianapolis artists to create original hashtag mask-up indie artworks to serve as positive uplifting public service announcements. And whereas, the imagery of these artworks expressed the powerful sentiments of empathy and cultural inclusivity aimed at resolving the individual tensions and inspiring residents to wear masks to show care and concern for the health, safety, and well-being of their friends, family, and neighbors. Sorry, my phone is doing weird things. Friends, families, and neighbors. And whereas, the artists have been at the forefront of influencing social and political change while also documenting significant times in our city's history so that future generations can understand, reflect on, and learn from our collective past. And whereas, the city of Indianapolis celebrates the artists and their unique ability to help heal and move toward a more engaged, inclusive, and just society and strive for a present, to present a vision of a new and better world. And whereas, the critical role of artists as historians has been internationally recognized. For one instance, in a podcast by Brazilian drag queen and political figure, lecturer, teacher, anthropologist, and sociologist, Kita Von Hanty, asked how artists would document these days while so many are living in lockdown mode. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Indianapolis, the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section one, Indianapolis Marion County City County Council thanks the Arts Council of Indianapolis and the six artists and recognizes their historic, artistic, and cultural value of their contributions. Those artists are Tasha Beckwith, who did Joy, two thousand and twenty, in digital illustration. Merva Sol Eckert, in In This Together, a two thousand and twenty freestyle digital illustration. Shontae Lewis, Sisters in the City, mask-up two thousand and twenty digital illustration. William Denton Ray, Master Raiders, two thousand and twenty Adobe Illustrator. Aaron Scamahorn, Sanitary Solidarity, two thousand and twenty digital illustration. And Israel Solomon, District Seventeen resident. Canal Roses, two thousand and twenty acrylic on canvas. Section two, the City Council thanks the Arts Council of Indianapolis and the artists in Indianapolis and everywhere for their contributions now and throughout history in documenting for posterity, a reflection of life in any given moment. And, Mr. President, the council recognizes and encourages the artists to continue the bold representation of our social justice journey. Now, Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Second.
The motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? I think none of them. Councilor Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to share some my accolades with the program. I thought it was very successful. I distributed, was fortunate to have many businesses in my area take posters, and I had them strewn throughout my district and had a proud artist, William Denton Ray, was a D-three constituent. So I just wanted to do a shout-out to a constituent artist in my area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. All right, seeing no other comments.
I'm not sure what it is to my video here, but it's saying I only have, oh, says I only have audio at this time, so. I, go ahead, Mr. President, my apologies.
No worries. Seeing no additional comments from councilors, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, sorry, sorry, I did want to turn this over to Israel Solomon, who was one of the artists who did Canal Roses, two thousand and twenty, and acrylic on canvas, and he is, should be with us via video.
All right, very good, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Solomon.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Adamson, for introducing me. I just wanted to take the time out to thank the city of Indianapolis, also the Arts Council, for giving myself and the other five artists the opportunity to participate in this program and produce this work. You know, it was something that we had to use our creativity because we had to show individuals in a positive way utilizing those masks. And what I wanted to do with my piece was represent one of the most beautiful pieces of the city, in my opinion, which is the canal. And I think I was successful doing that. I appreciate the opportunity, and I definitely hope to obtain more opportunities from the city. The support for the arts is definitely there, and I see that it's being noticed around Indianapolis and even across the nation. So thank you all for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Mr. Vice President, did you have any additional comments?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you all. The next item on our agenda is proposal number two seventy-seven, which is referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Next item on our agenda is proposal number three thirty-three, everyone, which recognizes the Indiana Union Construction Industry and their recruitment arm, the Indiana Careers and Construction Association. Who will be presenting on that this evening?
Mr. President, I will.
Councilor Ray, please proceed.
Thank you, sir. A proposal three thirty-three is a special resolution recognizing the Indiana Union Construction Industry and their recruitment arm, the Indiana Careers and Construction Association. Whereas this week, the country celebrates National Apprenticeship Week, recognizing the value of skilled training to workforce and economic development and the impact made by the Indiana Union Construction Industry and their recruitment arm, the Indiana Careers and Construction Association throughout Indiana. And whereas, by providing skilled apprenticeship training programs to Hoosiers statewide, the Indiana Union Construction Industry and the Indiana Careers and Construction Association are providing opportunities for residents to improve their skills, their careers, and their lives. These training programs are an asset to our communities. And whereas, there are currently more than seventy-five thousand skilled tradesmen and women in the Indiana Union Construction Industry. And whereas, there are currently more than seventy-eight hundred apprentices enrolled in Union Construction Apprenticeship Programs in Indiana with access to more than sixty apprenticeship training locations throughout the state consisting of twenty-two percent minorities, nine percent veterans, and five percent females. And whereas, each year, the Indiana Union Construction Industry makes a private industry investment of more than forty-four million dollars in apprenticeship training through their jointly managed apprenticeship programs. And whereas, since nineteen ninety-three, more than fifteen thousand apprentices from the Indiana Union Construction Industry have earned an associate's degree in applied science from Ivy Tech Community College as a direct result of their enrollment in the Union Construction Apprenticeship Programs. This two-year degree is earned at no additional cost to the student. Now therefore be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. The Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes the Indiana Union Construction Industry and their recruitment arm, the Indiana Careers and Construction Association. The council heartily congratulates the Indiana Union Construction Industry and the Indiana Careers and Construction Association and wishes them continued success. The mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature here, too. And, Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments from councilors? Councilor Brown.
Um, I just want to echo everything Councilor Ray just said. I'd love to be added as a co-sponsor. We know that careers in construction open up so many doors. The ladder goes as high as you want to climb. So this is fantastic. Thank you, Councilor Ray, for honoring our brothers and sisters in construction.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Oliver, is that you?
Yes, I would like Counselor Ray to add me as one of the co-sponsors, please.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo with Counselor Brown, as a workforce development provider and educator and trainer, I too like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you. Thanks for bringing this, Counselor Ray.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? Is that Counselor McCormick?
Ah, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just want to echo my colleagues, thank Counselor Ray, and ask to be added as a co-sponsor as well.
Very good. Thank you very much, Counselor McCormick. If there are no additional comments, Counselor Ray.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. You know, as an apprenticeship graduate, that special resolution is one that's near and dear to my heart, so I appreciate the support of the Council tonight. If just a couple minutes we could, I'd like to introduce a really good friend of mine, Lynn Busby, who's the Director of Community Outreach for the Indiana Careers and Construction Association, just to say a few words.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. We appreciate your support and all the other councilors signing on tonight. On behalf of the Indiana Union Construction Industry and our recruiting arm, the Indiana Careers and Construction Association, I would like to thank the City Council for celebrating National Apprentice Week with us.
Very good. Thank you.
Our 60 state-of-the-art apprenticeship locations throughout Indiana are proud to offer Hoosiers an educational opportunity to join the construction industry. In addition, our more than 4,000 contractors who employ our tradesmen and tradeswomen appreciate your recognition of construction apprenticeships as a strong post-secondary education choice for those interested in building a career. We appreciate the Council's support of our outreach efforts, educating students and adults on the benefits of a career in construction and the pathway to a better economic future for our neighbors and the Indianapolis community. And we look forward to working with a continuous partnership with the Council as we all work to build better opportunities for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Counselor Ray, any additional comments?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all. So without the additional comments from councilors, all in favor, please signify. Yes, Counselor Evans?
All right, really quick, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor as well. I know my support of this is, it's none of the union members and former union member, myself, with IATSE, working there at the state chain, or educator, myself, so thank you.
Thank you. Now I shall wait for just a moment. Are there any additional comments from councilors? Very good. Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Of the next item on our agenda is proposal number 277, which is referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, Chairman Robinson. Chairman, you are still muted.
Now let me unmute. Thank you, Mr. President. So I had my mute button unmuted, but the administrators had me muted. So what consent, Mr. President? Let's take 277, 278 together, please.
Consent.
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 Thank you. Proposal 277, 2020 appoints Maggie A. Lewis to the Early Intervention Planning Council, and proposal 278, 2020 appoints Paul Anay, the only intervention planning council. Both councilors weren't required to attend our meeting. However, Counselor Anay is on the committee, and Majority Leader Lewis came highly recommended. For support and passage, Counselor Carlino made a motion to amend proposal 277, change the date with the ending of the appointments. Counselor Mallory moved, seconded by Counselor Carlino, to send proposal 277 and 278 to the full council, where they do pass as amended recommendation, the motion carried by a vote of 10 to 0 for both proposals. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Mr. President, you are muted.
Are there comments from councilors? All right. Seeing none, we will proceed then to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bane.
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Counselor Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgari.
Counselor Masgari, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Mallory.
Counselor Mallory, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, yes.
Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Of the next item on our agenda is proposal number 305, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 305, 2020, approves the appointment of Scott Hall as the Director of the Marion County Community Corrections Agency. CFO of the City Council, Hall said that he came before the council about one year ago, humbly accepting the position to work with the council. He said that this opportunity to work with the Marion County Community Corrections Agency, which he believes has taken great strides over the last few years, has an opportunity to serve the community and the reform efforts in our city. He said that he is honored to be selected by the MCCA Board, stakeover as Director of the agency. Counselor Boots moved, seconded by Counselor Barth, to send proposal 305 to the full council. They do pass recommendation, the vote carried by, the motion carried by a vote of 10 to 0, Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors?
Just a brief acknowledgement of the, while he was here a short time, he was burning white hot and added a lot of contribution to our operations, and it is clearly our loss and their gain, and, Mr. Hall, I bid you farewell.
Thank you, Counselor Boots. Are there any additional comments from councilors? Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so everyone knows, Mr. Hall was the CFO at Community Corrections for a few years, so he knows the agency very well, and I think he'll serve very well as the new executive director over there, though. So he's made with the operation, served there for years, and it should be a good fit for the organization. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Robinson. If there are no additional comments, Counselor Brown, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to thank Scott. He's been wonderful. He came on with probably the largest class of freshman councilors all at once, too, and trained us up quickly, and he's just been so kind and so wonderful and answers our questions so quickly. We're going to miss him dearly, and Community Corrections is getting an amazing person, so thank you, Scott.
You're here. Thank you, Counselor Brown. All right, then, then we will proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bane.
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Counselor Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Counselor Boots, wholeheartedly, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Congratulations, CFO Hall. Counselor Jackson is a aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgari.
Counselor Masgari, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
Counselor McCormick, aye. Best of luck.
Counselor Mallory.
Counselor Mallory, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Oliver, yes.
Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, CFO Hall. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 334, which approves a schedule of regular council meetings for the year 2021. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Any comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we will now proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bane.
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mallory.
Counselor Mallory, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Oliver, yes.
Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal numbers 306 through 308 refer to the Administration and Finance Committee, and were introduced by Counselor Masgari. Proposal number 306 approves a transfer of $1,100,000 in the budget, in the 2020 budget of the Marion County Information Services Agency Information Services Fund for unanticipated expenses in 2020 related to modernizing and updating technological equipment and systems. Proposal number 307 approves additional transfers and appropriations totaling $19,709,473 in the 2020 budget of various city and county departments and agencies, various city-county funds, consisting of transfers of existing appropriations in the amount of $17,589,558 among characters to properly reflect expenditures, and an additional $2,119,915 in federal and local, brand of words, not previously appropriated. Proposal number 308 approves additional appropriations totaling $209,272,972 in the 2020 budget of various city and county departments and agencies, various city-county funds to cover expenses associated with the coronavirus response. Proposal numbers 309 through 313 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number 309, introduced by Counselor Masgari, approves the 2021 budget of the Greater Virginia Avenue Corridor Economic Improvement District. Proposal number 310, introduced by Counselor Adamson, approves the budget of the Woodford Place Economic Improvement District. Proposal number 311, introduced by Counselor Lewis, approves expenditures from the Community Revitalization Enhancement District's Industrial Development Fund totaling $464,245 for use within the Lafayette Square Community Revitalization Enhancement District, also known as the International Marketplace. Proposal number 312, introduced by councilors, were introduced by councilors Bane and Evans, approves the statement of benefit of Navardis Manufacturing LLC and Advanced Accelerator Applications, an applicant for tax abatement located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal number 313, introduced by Counselor Graves, approves an inducement resolution for Pepper Mill TC LLC for the issuance of economic development multifamily housing revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15 million to finance a portion of a cost of acquisition, destruction, financing, renovation, and equipping of an existing multifamily housing facility, commonly known as Pepper Mill Farms Apartment, consisting of 160 apartment units, together with functionally related and subordinate facilities for low and moderate income individuals and families. for low and moderate income individuals and families located at 6830 Melview Drive in District 13. Proposal numbers 314 and 315 refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, and were introduced by Counsel Robinson. Proposal number 314 approves certain public purpose grants totaling $315,000 from the Drug Free Community Fund. Proposal number 315 approves an additional appropriation of $275,000 in the 2020 budget of the Marion County Coroner County General Fund to fund additional supply and contractual needs, specifically pathology and transportation. Proposal number 316, proposal number 316 through 321 refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 316 through 318 were introduced by Counsel Adamson. Proposal number 316 establishes interest in making the purchase of specified land owned by Rory Higgins III for construction of a DPW project, Mini Creek Restoration. Proposal number 317 establishes interest in making the purchase of specified land owned by Gammatic Holdings LLC for the construction of a DPW project, Mini Creek Restoration. Proposal number 318 establishes interest in making the purchase of specified land owned by Van Norman Trust Trustee Empire Holding Company, Principal James R. Hopeka for the construction of a DPW project, Mini Creek Restoration. Proposal number 319, introduced by Counsel Jones, authorizes residential permit parking on McCarty Street near Fletcher Place in District 16. Proposal number 320, introduced by Counsel Mallory, authorizes intersection controls in the Buck Creek Woods subdivision in District 25. Proposal number 321, introduced by Counsel Mascary, authorizes intersection controls at the intersection of Boyd and Nelson Avenues in District 21. Proposal numbers 322 and 323 refer to the Municipal Corporations Committee, and were introduced by Counsel Osalee. Proposal number 322 appoints Gregory Hines, reappoints Gregory Hines to the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal number 323 appoints Mary Clark to the Indianapolis Transportation Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal numbers 324 through 329 refer to the Rules and Public Policy Committee, and were introduced by counselors Lewis, Grace, and Jackson. Proposal number 324 appoints Judge Jeffrey Gaither to the Indianapolis Commission on African American Mails. Proposal number 325 appoints Representative Greg Porter, I'm sorry, to the Indianapolis Commission on African American Mails. Proposal number 326 appoints Marshawn Wiley to the Indianapolis Commission on African American Mails. Proposal number 327 appoints Tammy Butler Robinson to the Indianapolis Commission on African American Mails. Proposal number 328 appoints John Bryce to the Indianapolis Commission on African American Mails. Proposal number 329 appoints Kenneth Allen to the Indianapolis Commission on African American Mails. Proposal number 335 refer to, I'm sorry, the Rules and Public Policy Committee, and were introduced by counselors Osalee and Brown. Amends Chapter 283 of the Code to establish the Indianapolis Youth Commission. Proposal number 336 refer to the, I'm sorry, the Rules and Public Policy Committee, introduced by Counsel Osalee, amends Chapter 151, Articles 5, 7, and 9 of the Code. Proposal number 337, introduced by Counsel Jackson, refer to the Community Affairs Committee, amends Chapter 202, Article 7 of the Code regarding the Office of Public Health and Safety. Proposal number 349, introduced by Counsel Osalee, refers to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, appoints Amanda La Anderson to the Indianapolis Historic Preservation Commission. Proposal number 350, introduced by Counsel Osalee, refer to the Administration and Finance Committee, appoints Tanya Ndaye to the City-County Audit Committee. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders, Priority Business. Proposal numbers 338 through 348 are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. If no one wishes to call any of these proposals down, or any of these rezonings down for public hearing, they will pass into law. Counselors, is it requested to call any of the rezonings down? Right, seeing none, proposal numbers 338 through 348, 2020, will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders, Public Hearing, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 304, 2020, approves of additional appropriations totaling $400,316 in 2020 budget of the Marion County Sheriff's Office, federal, state, and local grant funds, state and federal law enforcement funds, sex offender offender admin fund, and law enforcement continuing education fund for additional grants to K-9 officers, tasers, and law enforcement policies, sorry, law enforcement supplies. Barbara Lawrence, CFO of the Marion County Sheriff's Office, stated that this, with respect for the community and some issues concerning K-9s, there is an amendment being presented to remove the K-9 two from the proposal. That was the amendment to the proposal. They are looking to fund in portions 60 to 81 tasers and 121 gas masks. The total of that request is $105,000. They're looking for an additional $233,000 for MAT, coordinator to coordinate medication assistance treatment for inmates, in addition to $43,000 to provide substance use disorder treatment classes, and overtime for jail personnel to transport inmates to and from the classes, and additional $25,000 for overtime for jail personnel for transport. Mr. President, there was a motion to amend by Counsel Barth. The motion passed 10 to 0. That motion was to remove the K-9 officers from this proposal. Counsel Oliver removed, second by Counsel Mallory, since proposal 304 to the full council, they do pass recommendation as amended. Motion carried by vote of 10 to 0, Mr. President, ISO move.
Second.
The motions have been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors?
Mr. President?
Chairman Robinson?
I do want to acknowledge Sheriff Forstal and his leadership team and CFO for recognizing the K-9 officer component of that proposal was problematic. They willingly and voluntarily decided to remove that portion of the grant dollars from the proposal. So I just want to acknowledge the sheriff and his team for willingly and voluntarily removing that portion, considering the magnitude of what occurred in the App store article a few weeks ago. So kudos to the sheriff and his team for respecting the wishes of our council and our community, removing that small portion from the proposal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there additional comments from counselors? Alright, seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any comments submitted online?
No comments, Mr. President.
Very good. Is there anyone in the audience here in the City-County Building that would like to speak to proposal 304? Alright, seeing no one. Counselors, any additional comments? Counselor Evans?
Thank you, President Osalee. I'm very hardened by the majority of this proposal that goes towards the substance treatment and the medication for the inmates and the transportation to and from treatment outside of jail. I think that's very much needed and going to be very helpful going forward. I am just hopeful that the funding that's going towards the supplies, including the masks, aren't, no, I know they're precautionary, I just hope they aren't going to be needed. So that's just my hope, but I am thankful that the bulk of it is going towards the medicine and the substance treatment side of things. So, thank you.
Chairman Robinson?
Mr. President, I also want to allude to, if I didn't read it in my notes, that this, these are grant dollars, and this does not impact in the fiscal aspect of the 2021 budget. These are all grants. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for that. Any additional comments from counselors? Alright, seeing none, and welcome sheriffs. Welcome, Madam CFO. Good to see you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Hearing no additional comments from counselors, we will now proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain?
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, yes.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, yes.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, yes.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Mallory?
Counselor Mallory, aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Oliver, yes.
Counselor Osalee?
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson?
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders, Unfinished Business, Public Hearing, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been advised by council staff, Mr. President, that notice of public hearing proposal 255, 2020, which is the City-County Fiscal Orders Number 18220, was published before a hearing on the wrong date, and the vote on October the 12th that we took, Mr. President, was ineffective. Therefore, I move to ratify the council's vote to adopt proposal number 255, 2020, on October 12th, 2020, thereby adopt proposal 255, 2020, which is legally re-advertized for public hearing as required by law at this meeting of the full council on November 16th, 2020. Mr. President, ISO move.
Second.
Second.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors?
Mr. President?
Chairman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would respectfully request to allow our general counsel, Ms. Kim, to kind of give a little bit more background on this proposal and what we had to revisit today.
Very good. Counsel, Counsel Kim?
Thank you, Mr. President. As the motion states, my apologies, I'll start over. Thank you, Mr. President. As the motion states, this proposal was not properly advertised at the October 12th, 2020 meeting. As such, we have to ratify this in order to be effective. Any questions?
Mr. President, I think, there we go. Thanks.
Chairman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. On our last hearing of this proposal a few weeks back, there were three individuals abstaining from the vote on 22 to 3 vote. I was one of the individuals to abstain from this vote, abstain from the vote. I'll be doing so again today, Mr. President. Abstaining.
Mr. President? Mr. President, permission to abstain?
Thank you, Majority Leader. Additional comments from counselors? I've seen none. Madam Clerk, please, please tell me, are there any comments submitted online?
No, Mr. President.
Very good. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal number 255?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm one of the councils that need to abstain as well.
Thank you very much. Alright, there was no one in the audience to speak to proposal number 255. Any additional comments from counselors? Very good. Seeing none, we'll proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counsel Bain?
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselar Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselar Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans?
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves?
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counsel Jackson abstained. Counsel Jones?
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counsel Lewis abstained. Counsel Mascary?
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counsel McCormick?
Counsel McCormick, aye.
Counsel Mallory?
Counsel Mallory, aye.
Counsel Oliver? Counsel Oliver? Counsel Osalee?
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray?
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson abstained. Mr. President, that would be 21, yay, and three upsets.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Final Adoption. And this next item on our agenda is proposal number 299, refer to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascary?
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration Finance Committee met October 20th virtually. Proposal 299 authorized the city controller to take necessary steps to add Roth option to all city-county employees participating in the deferred constipation plan. ISO move, it passed in a vote of 9-0. ISO move.
Second.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments? The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments or any comments from counselors? I know that we have this evening with us ISA Director Patrick uh um Elliot Patrick and Ed Clowning. Do you have a presentation for us?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, we we actually do not have a a presentation, but we can give you uh the details of the request we're making in this resolution, rather, excuse me, proposal three oh six, uh which is requesting for a one million dollar transfer from our character one to our character three to cover uh expenses for technology needs that uh were taken on at the end of last year's uh after our budget cycle. So ISA was in the process of doing a RFP for our major outsourced partner for our infrastructure, including our service desk and many of our data center manager management and pieces of that nature. Uh in that process, we brought on a new firm, Bell Tech Logics, actually happening to be a local company for the first time in ISA's history. Um and in that process, that uh RFP ended up resulting in us needing to make purchases of additional software for better management and monitoring of our environment so that we could provide better services for our customers, being city and county agencies. Um so there are some overages related to that, as well as some overages related to uh a couple of projects we helped to take on, including with IMPD. There is a statistics project we're working on for them to better be able to manage and understand their data and have better visibility in the field, uh some security items we took on as well, and then finalizing our data center migration. And those items are the reason why we're coming to the council to ask for this uh financial move.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Are there any questions of ISA Director? Seeing none. Any additional comments from counselors? Counselor Hart?
Uh, yeah, thank you for the opportunity. You know, some of the things I, you know, heard you mention uh seem that, you know, they may have been short notice, but things like a data center migration, that doesn't seem to be anything that just comes up out of the the blue. Can you give more background? I mean, I I guess I missed the question side of it. I guess it was, I did have a question, but you know, how does a data center migration fit into the the relations to the first things you mentioned in terms of working with IMPD or uh, you know, the RFP you mentioned? Where does that come into play?
Yeah, absolutely. So the RFP, uh, excuse me, not the RFP, the data center migration was a product we started um towards the tail end of twenty eighteen, and that in that process, we needed to, one, we purchased new equipment to and negotiated a contract to move our data center over to the Indiana Office of Technology. And in doing uh that process, we then had to look at every single application that was in our data center and make sure that we're able to get that migrated and moved over to the new data center. In that process, we had to work with the agencies and departments to navigate timing for those migrations to happen and to move. That project was scheduled to actually happen um around February of this year, but when COVID hit, we ended up putting a lot of those items on pause because we were going to have to carve out windows with Public Safety, actually IMPD and a couple others that were needing to move, and that was not the appropriate time to ask them for that. That additional time from about February through June, during that time, we had to pay additional maintenance dollars uh for our existing data center equipment because it was end of life, and that is where the additional cost came in. So you're absolutely correct, the data center migration was planned for, we were working on it, it was something that we absolutely knew we were taking on, but when COVID hit and some of the additional uh extensions of the project and the timing with COVID, we had to pay additional dollars for maintenance and support for the existing equipment.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I had.
Thank you, Counselor Hart. Any additional comments or questions from counselors? Counselor Evans?
Uh, thank you, President. And I apologize if this might have been answered a little bit earlier, but um just to the point of the earlier uh proposal about um Prop three oh six transferring um from the character one to character three um at, you know, if this um, or oh Sorry, the, oh, separate question. Never mind. Sorry, wrong issue.
No problem. Any additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we will now proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain?
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Oliver, yes.
Counselor Osley?
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three zero zero. Sorry, the next item on our agenda is proposal number two ninety-nine. Um, refer to Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascary.
Mr. President, I'm a little confused. Didn't we just do proposal two ninety-nine?
Please forgive me.
Or proposal three hundred to Metro?
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three hundred, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three hundred approves a transfer of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the twenty twenty budget of the Marion County Surveyors Fund for char- from character one to character four to purchase work vehicles for staff. Deborah Jenkins, Marion County Surveyor, stated that there are five vacancies in her department and she has been short staff by approximately fifty percent. Ms. Jenkins stated that this request comes from unused payroll fund. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero, and Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Very good. Movements are properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll now proceed to roll call for our vote.
Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain?
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans? Counselor Jared Evans? I'll try back. Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye, Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver? Counselor Oliver? Counselor Osley?
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Oliver? Mr. President, we have uh the vote is twenty-four zero.
You hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Counselor Gray needs to turn off his microphone.
Thank you.
Uh, counselors?
You can't Oliver now?
Counselor Oliver?
Thank you, Counsel Oliver. So Chairman Mascary gave a report on two ninety-nine. Um, we did take a vote on three oh six. I would ask that we go for debate on two ninety-nine. Comments from counselors?
Counselor, President Osley, wouldn't we have had to amend amend two ninety-nine to add that? That portion of money?
Thank you, uh Chairman Mascary. I'm going to turn this to uh Counsel Kim. Counsel Kim, please.
Chairman Mascary, we need to take a vote on proposal two ninety-nine. That's a proposal that authorizes the city controller to take necessary steps to add Roth um option for all city county employees. We previously adopted proposal three oh six, so we need to open up debate on two ninety-nine and take a vote.
Thank you. We're clarifying.
All right, additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none. Oh, uh, Counsel Boots?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have permission to abstain, please, due to family uh connections to county employees.
Thank you, Counsel Boots. Additional comments? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain?
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots is abstaining. Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Oliver, yes.
Counselor Osley?
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Twenty-four, yay, one abstention.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three zero one, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three zero one approves a statement of benefit for Enbridge Incorporated, an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. A PowerPoint presentation was shared making the following key points. The company's headquarters is located in West Westchester, Illinois. Um, the manufacturing plant is here in Indianapolis, two hundred and eighty United Steel workers. The total plant employees, employees, three hundred and seventy-four individuals, Marion County employees, one hundred and seventy-five. Average wage is thirty-three dollars and ninety-two cent. The project is anticipated to start in twenty twenty and is and will be completed by twenty twenty-four. The total investment is sixty million with the with the majority will be spent in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero, and Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Movements are properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll now proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain?
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Oliver, yes.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three zero two, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three zero two authorizes the issuance of economic development revenue bonds not to exceed three point five million for midtown development for acquisition, construction, equipment, and preservation of mixed-use corporate headquarters development containing two buildings consisting of approximately fifty-three thousand square feet of office space in one building, approximately twenty-eight thousand square feet of office retail space on the ground level with housing use, how, housing units in the above portion of the building, with parking under both buildings with at least fifty-one parking spaces. A PowerPoint presentation was shared making the following key points. Eighty-eleven group anticipate the, the creation of one hundred and eighty-five new jobs representing a total of five hundred and thirty-five local employees. Proposed new hires will make approximately thirty-eight dollars per hour, and at least twenty percent of the units will be available to those who make eighty percent of the average medium income. The proposal passed out a committee by a vote of eleven to zero, and Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just briefly share that the developers on this project were very intentional in communicating with our neighbors, with the neighboring properties, making adjustments to their plans so that this was a driven effort that consulted the community and incorporated their feedback. It's going to bring jobs into an area that we are looking to continue revitalizing and growing, uh, once the pandemic subsides. And I will just say, I know as well, the developer Dan Jacobs is on, uh, this evening with us. So if anybody does have questions, he is available for that, but that's all I have at the moment, Mr. President. I hope my colleagues will join me in supporting this proposal tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Potts. Are there additional comments from councilors? Very good. We'll now proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dill.
Counselor Dill, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans. Counselor Jared Evans. Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary.
Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Oliver, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans. Okay, Mr. President, that would be twenty-four yea, um, Counselor, I think Jared Evans is probably having audio.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three zero three, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three zero three authorizes the issuance of an economic development revenue bond not to exceed eight point seven million dollars to the Union East for the purpose of financing, reimbursing, and the cost of acquisition, construction, renovation, and equipping of a project consisting of a parking garage containing at least seven hundred spaces in support of a six-story, sixty-six hundred square foot technology office building and mixed-use development known as, known as Union House containing the first floor retail, first floor with retail and one hundred and fifty-four studio apartments. A PowerPoint presentation was shared making the key points. This project was rece, this project has received a good faith memo from the Office of Minority and Women in Business Development. Its dedicated tech space will support more than three hundred and fifty jobs in tech. Union House will feature a flexible lease option. Seven hundred jobs will be created. The proposal passed out a committee by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Uh, comments from councilors? I have a question. Counselor Hart. Yeah, uh, just out of curiosity, I wasn't, not on that committee, but what is, what are the three hundred and fifty technology jobs that are being created? Chairwoman Lewis, or should I ask CFO Holt? CFO Holt?
It's a variety of positions. Um, it, it, it's basically an incubator. So they host space for a variety of different, uh, companies to come and work. So it's not any one. It's, um, it's a long list, and I can actually send that presentation along to you, Counselor, if you'd like.
Is it, is it one of these shared working spaces where you rent the space and work with people?
No, uh, there, there are some shared space, but it's largely each has their own individual office space.
Okay, and this is at a, like a four rent, rent the, the office space for X amount of time type situation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments or questions from councilors? Counselor Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, maybe CFO Holt can answer this. Is this the Union five-two-five? That is the current tech building, is it not?
Correct.
And where are these new developments going relative to the current existing building?
They're adjacent to this. Um, the, via the map, it's basically a, a large block square, and they, these buildings are just one beside each other.
And is anything being done with the current, the, the Union Hall building? It's already built out and leased for the most part?
Yes, it is. And, and there's also some space, uh, I wouldn't call it convention space, but there's large meeting space that they rent out to groups as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments from councilors? Counselor Evans.
Thank you, President Osalee. I just had a question about the actual units that are coming in. So it says, um, the one hundred and fifty-four apartment units are focused on housing, support the current employment base. So does that mean that they're, um, focused on the people that are currently employed and not going to be, um, focused on the, you said, the three hundred and fifty that are coming in? Or is there going to be any more housing units that would be coming in in the future? Because I know it says seven hundred spaces uh, on the six-story, um, building, um, but a hundred and fifty-four apartment units. So, um, would that imply that there may be future spaces or larger apartment units than just the studios?
Mr. President, I believe Ms. Scarlett, uh, from the city of Indianapolis was on. Can we ask her to respond? I'm not sure I understand Counselor Evans' question.
I think that would be helpful. Ms. Martin, would you?
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, Chairwoman Lewis and President Osalee. Counselor Evans, it is a mix of Studio One and Two Bedroom Apartments. Um, and the eighty percent, or sorry, the twenty percent at a eighty percent AMI, which represents the affordable housing status side. Essentially, that means that twenty percent of the total number of units, of the one hundred and fifty-four units, um, it has to be a mix of those Studio One and Two bedrooms that are at the affordable rates. Um, and as I said, that's, um, affordable. The workforce housing is eighty percent area median income rents. And, and I think just to answer your question about how it supports the current workforce, I think the theory is that folks that work um, at the Union five-two-five or the new six-oh-one building may wish to live nearby, and so, you know, creating this community of work-live might be something that they would want to seek out, but it's not specifically, it doesn't, you don't have to work at one of those buildings to rent an apartment in this building.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Chairman Gray.
Is, do you have an address for this building? Where is it located?
Uh, Ms. Martin, would you, uh, would you assist?
A Melan address, so we can kind of picture where it is.
Yeah, absolutely. So the, um, it's at five-two-five South Meridian. Um, and the new building, the new office building that they're building now is at six-oh-one South Meridian. Um, and then just to address where the rest of the buildings are, um, the parking garage is across the street, um, kind of, well, it's on South Meridian as well, just south of McCarty. Um, and the Union Block Apartments will be just north of that, um, the parking garage, also across the street from the office buildings.
This, this is, this is across the street from the, uh, the big restaurant down there, uh, Superior's?
It is close by, um, but yeah, it's close by.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Very good. Seeing none, we'll now proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dill.
Counselor Dill, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary.
Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Oliver, yes.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There is no business under special service to district councils, and there is no business under new business, but I do believe in announcements. We have an announcement from Chairwoman Jackson. Chairwoman Jackson, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, yes. In twenty eighteen, this body, uh, passed a, uh, tax credit, um, um, proposal for a tax credit deal in my specific council district, District fourteen, for affordable housing for two hundred units that help assist keep two hundred families, uh, including, uh, women, children, seniors, disableds in their homes, uh, remodeled totally down to the studs. And on October twentieth, we had the opportunity to do a ribbon-cutting ceremony, um, and, and actually tour a couple of those units and see what they look like, and get the history of the property. This property was built in nineteen seventy to revitalize those units and bring them forth, so they'll be good for another forty, fifty years, and have affordable housing for those on the far east side of Indianapolis and in my district. I'm very honored that my colleagues thought it was worthy enough to come out, and it's not many times I think any councilors have gone back after you passed a tax credit deal that to see the impact of the lives that you have changed. And colleagues came out and saw what that impact did, and had the opportunity to hear the history, hear the background, and hear the passion of what li, of the difference that you made. So I want to publicly thank you tonight, um, along with Mayor Joe, our honorable Mayor Joe, how I spoke, but specifically my colleagues. Some of you who passed that vote for that tax credit deal that has forever changed the lives of residents and families in my district and this city, so they can maintain a safe, healthy, and affordable housing. Specifically, President Osalee, thank you, sir. Madam Leader Lewis, thank you, ma'am. Counselor Monroe Gray, thank you, sir. And Counselor Ethan Evans. Pass off to you all, salute you for all your, um, not too much of the time to come out and celebrate with us and do that ribbon-cutting ceremony and take time to listen to the residents and what was done that day. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. President. I yield back.
Thank you, Chairwoman Jackson. Uh, tonight before we, uh, before we adjourn, I wanted to make sure that we acknowledged CFO Holt's, uh, departure. So tonight is the final meeting of our friend and colleague, Mr. Scott Holt. Though Scott managed to eke out a barely one-year tenure with us in the council office, he was well-known to many of us before he arrived as our chief financial officer, and will remain so as he departs to lead Marion County Community Corrections. Scott began his public service with the City County Enterprise in nineteen ninety-four, and has worked all but two years since then with the city or the county, tackling one challenge after another. He's held nine different roles in six different departments, filling each one well. But I'm sure his tenth will be the most challenging, fulfilling, and inspiring of all. Please join me in congratulating him on his new role. CFO Holt, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So, as the document agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Counsel Maury.
Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by all councilors, in memory of IFD engineer Matthew D. Bennett, by Counselor Maury, in memory of Richard France and Ethan E, Ethan Williams, by Counselor Osalee, Louis and Gray, in memory of Hazel Stewart, by Counselor Lewis, in memory of Ken Kenny Diggs, Gil Davis.
by Counselor Lewis, in memory of Ken Kenny Diggs, Gil Davis, John McKellen, and Annie May Edwards, by Counselor Jared Evans, in memory of Peggy Hind, Pat Robinson, Pat Robinson's sample, and Tim Prickett, by Counselor Osley, in memory of Nurame Austin and Dr. Robert Taylor, by Counselor Barth, in memory of Elsa Florence Kramer. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and the respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask that the support of fellow counselors, I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent records of this body, and that a letter bearing the council's seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counsel Maury. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the request is so ordered. There are no further motions, we are adjourned. Thank you, counselors.